Welcome. Welcome to the Prose Committee. And welcome to the great turnout for the public. This is our kick off meeting of the Prose Committee. And excited to be here. For me, it's really an honor to have the opportunity to work with this committee group of leadership leaders from the community that have gotten us to where we are now and over the public to carry through and execute the the great plans that have been put in place and with that. Coram, we have all members of the committee. There's one open spots, so we've got all four committee members here. We have a forum. Let's see. Your report. If you want to note that we have at this point, three highly qualified applicants for the for the Prose Committee. And Haley, as they apply now, it's already a public record. I can speak their names.
Well, I haven't posted the agenda packet yet, but
So I should defer that.
To you. I didn't receive another one last night.
Yeah, expected that. So, sorry, I'm corrected. As expected, we have four highly qualified applicants. And so, oh my goodness, it would be like, who's the fourth? Pardon me?
Who's the fourth? You said four highly qualified applicants.
Indeed, indeed.
But you don't even know who the fourth one is.
Pardon me?
I can announce it.
Well, I was just wondering why he knew they were highly qualified.
I might have known it's gone. I don't think there's any of this room. Hi. Committee member communications. Jim?
I was just cracking his head.
Okay.
I do if no one else does.
Hi, German.
The we have never sort of explored the issues of the possible trail coming down the Burton Drive and the old historic trail going in there. Both once proposed by the county and once proposed by the city, and we need to discuss that sometime. We and as well as access under the bridge from the physical east and west. The bridges, the span at San Simeon is possibility for going underneath the Caltrans property. We're at a point where, and the reason I bring these up is we're Shannon and I are both going to the, are members of the NCAC, and we're going to a meeting with Slow Safe Streets Initiative tonight, which may have money for grant, for grants and so forth. So we are going to go and look for specific issues on that we could possibly apply for. And another one might be walkways along the streets of the major lights, you know, crossing the areas there. Some of them are pretty well urbanized as they probably should be for that crossing. But essentially, we're talking about walkways, not necessarily sidewalks or dedicated, you know, frontages type things, but certainly at least three to five feet for pedestrian ways among the major streets that can walk those those areas. And that's something that Prose probably should be if it's recreation open space, although it's a transportation issue sort of in way of their use. It's not a, the recreation is crossing the highway one, but not necessarily devoted for recreation's access. So those, those issues we're going to look at, we'll issue no more in the next meeting next time. But I think we need to move on those other, just looking at the access under the bridge, because again, that's a Caltrans thing. It won't be a safe streets, but it's a thing that Caltrans, we need to partner with the county to discuss how to safely cross that area. And if it goes under the bridge, it's all on Caltrans land and they're billed when they get funded. But they may, they weren't uninterested to have gone through this with them. And so that's one we, I would like, we need to get the community's consideration of it and blessing of that project. If we're going to push it any further with the county and that's it.
Fantastic. Looking through the you know, original master plan, trails are definitely a component and they, I think they were listed under the open space category in the master plan. But furthering trails, in terms of the spirit of what this committee is about, furthering trails has got to be a critical component. That's very important. Other?
I have a question. I'm assuming after reading our packet that the bylaws are the same across all the committees?
Correct.
And then it states that the applicant will be chosen by you and then adopted by the board?
I will make a recognition to
Do we all need to talk about it or does it just come from you?
That's a good question. That's a good question. Not something that I you know, that's on the agenda for today. That's for sure.
That's why I brought it up right here. So we can maybe look at it?
I will, yeah, I'll chat with Tim on terms of what's, you know, what's the right approach. I think his kind of clean boundaries. When it's something that we can do, you'll simply say, you can do it. It's a matter of choice. So let's
Well, it won't be for this meeting anyway then, because you're going to have the vote in next, well.
Week on Thursday.
Yeah.
Week, Thursday, we're going to do this at board. So let's discuss this further in the future agendas section. Now, my sort of personality and behavioral traits will reveal themselves as we sit together. But I tend to be inclusive rather than exclusive in the decision making. So does it make sense? Okay, agenda review. So I'd like to hear, I'm not sure if Stephen did some of the asking that I maybe you can't, with agenda review, you're not looking at his agenda. So and first, Haley, find out if there's any audio. I want to be sure that Paula can hear us. They're on Zoom. How many are on Zoom? Or we have, do we have any on Zoom?
We have four on Zoom.
Okay. So find out if they can hear. I need to get out of sharing, right? And then look at this.
They can hear the meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
You confirm that, correct? So here, I thought you'd jump into public comment after this, agenda review. We're going to hear from David. We're going to look at the minutes from the last three meetings of the Prose Commission. Regular business, have a discuss, we're going to walk through a set of slides that I put together to basically discuss what is it that this committee is charged to do and how we're going to go about doing that, you know? How in terms of, and the norms of working together? You know, want to hear from the ad hoc committees that were part of Prose, understand, understand who was doing what, get that list. We're not going to, that's really my tip of that, that topic. And then the community park plan in current state is let's really dive into what information we do have on the panel. Fair a summary of that, so we'll work on that. And then the last part of regular business is, you know, media evaluation. How well did this meeting go? I've never led a meeting where at the end I didn't ask, all right, so how did this go? And how do we improve next time? Because if we don't ask that question, we don't improve. So let's make sure of that and
Point of order. I don't mean to be, what are we doing right now? We're doing agenda review, but I don't see that on the agenda. Is that correct? Or is that just me?
Nope.
Right? We've never done agenda review.
You're right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I had put that in, but it sent it, then that came out. So my apologies. But that is I will
Because I don't need agenda review in my meetings. That's my personal, if we were to discuss that, that's just taking our time. We've already set the agenda. Is that, do we, do we do agenda review at all these meetings?
Please, no.
Not definitely, definitely we have not.
My vote would be for you're the leader, you set the agenda, we're going with that.
All right. I second that. Time we go.
Yeah, second.
So public comment. Let's see. Oh, in the room. I've got some public comments to read in a few minutes, but what do we have from those who are here?
Can I ask a quick question about public comment?
Yes.
So it's limited to three minutes? The three, is it limited to three minutes when you're reading something and is it limited to three minutes when someone is speaking on Zoom?
Isn't that an interesting question?
It seems like it's five minutes when you're reading something and even longer sometimes on Zoom.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. And one thing I've been, you know, meaning to follow up, but we've been, we've received a lot of lengthy written comments and then it may take one or three minutes to read them. I think that's something I'll take note of and deal with before the next meeting. You know, fine question. That's been going through my mind as well. But for now, I think I'm obligated to read the full public comments. Yeah, thanks. Yes. All right. And how do I do that? Okay. All right. General manager.
Just wanted to touch base. Thanks, everybody. We spoke with counsel last week, I believe, in agenda review. And he did follow up on that question as to written comment. And so as if someone is timing the written comment and we hit the three minute mark, then we would stop reading the written comment. So you can read the written comments, someone can time, and then as we hit that three minute mark, then we just wouldn't finish the written comment. So just some information if you wanted to move forward with that.
Thanks. And I do have, you have a clock, so I'll I'll run that. Who else do we have? So in the room, public comments. Have none? Okay. And on the computer, we have none. So I will read and so Alita, I'll read three minutes worth of and I don't figure out why this keeps turning off the screen, but okay, here we go. So regarding resolutions forward dash 2009 and the community park plan and the Prose area in further development of the Cambria Community Parks Recreation and Open Space Community Park Plan should go through a constructive process, starting with a community wide survey, further analysis, and a formal process to change the plan that was originally approved in 2009 and currently appears on the website with the URL. And then I said resolution. And features such as skate park, disco, or pool at this point in time will directly violate resolution and the approved plan of 2009 and is ill advised. Justifications for doing so as the people need this, or it's for the kids, or we have the money, or it's taken too long, or not legitimate legal reasons to violate said resolution and alter the approved plan of 2009 without due process. Site has been allocated. Site has been allocated to the community at large. The site has not been allocated to smaller subset groups of people with special interests in getting individual projects built on the site that were not on the approved plan of 2009. Further, these interests appear to be competing, which is counterproductive and not based on at large community needs. This approach is neither transparent, fair, nor a cogent approach to integrate these ad hoc most approval projects into the recreation complex. If plan as presented in the resolution no longer meets the needs of the community at large, the plan needs to be formally and efficiently redefined. Changes to the resolution and the plan should be transparent and done with at large community input and involvement. Any other approach in getting the recreational complex built as is diagrammed and trouble and diametrically posed to the purpose of a community committee or commission, which is to serve the community at large, no more, no less. Regarding timing, discussion about how long it took to get the park non-built. We, fourteen years, and it's unclear why this recreational complex remains unbuilt. I would be interested in understanding what obstacles have been, because I do also by having these improvements sooner rather than later. And if that's what the community wants, further, I would be interested in understanding overall upfront investment for construction and as well as the projected running costs required to maintain the entire recreational complex. I'm interested in, I'm trying to understand the various funding source. Where will the initial investment funds come from to subsidize the construction of each element? And if those funds fall short, how would more funds be gained as a whole? And the second point, you know, two more points talking about you know, funding and maintenance. So I will, wouldn't bet there. And
Who was that from?
This was from Alita Francis. Some well thought out comments. I appreciate that very much. We also have from I don't read the time. That's from Elizabeth Simons or Simmons, I'm uncertain. I'm a senior citizen with physical condition that can be disabling. Part of Cambria, I drive much benefit from swimming at a local pool. It's disheartening to have a, to drive a long distance with my age and condition to find a pool for that swimming. Having a pool here would be immeasurably helpful to me. Maybe for that. And Lum Bryant.
Can you spell the Elizabeth's name again?
Thank you. Elizabeth. E L I Z A B E T H. And Simons is S I M O N D S. And Haley, you have a copy of the this.
Yeah.
So this is a print I made because of the font. So I made a print where I read it for ten. Okay. Look, S I M O N D S, not conventional spelling. And this is from Lum Bryant. L U M Bryant, B R Y A N T. Regarding CCSD meeting agenda, item eight A. And of course, we understand that that was the intended for the board, but you've also checked one we read at Prose. So doing so, drowning is a leading cause of unintentional injury related deaths worldwide, and the ability to swim significantly reducing the risk of such tragedies. Over 4,000 Americans die each year from drowning, including over 600 Californians. Swimming is a vital survival skill. Accidents can happen and knowing how to swim can be a lifesaver in situations involving water, especially in our beautiful coastal town. I am a part-time Cambrian working and residing in Ventura. My wife and I would love to eventually live here full time. I currently swim about five miles a week. I'm a former high school All-American, Stanford varsity swimmer, and 2022 US Masters National Champion. In order for me to continue swimming workouts while in Cambria, I have to travel to pools in Paso, Morro Bay, or Slope. Swimming promotes physical fitness and overall health. It is an excellent full body workout that improves cardiovascular endurance, muscle strength, and flexibility. Swimming is a low impact exercise, making it accessible to people of all ages and fitness levels, including those with joint problems or injuries. Moreover, a pool could serve as a hub for community gatherings and events. It would offer a space for swimming lessons, water aerobics, and recreational programs, fostering social connections and promoting a healthy lifestyle among residents. In conclusion, a year round pool is necessary for Cambria, not only for its recreational and tourism value, but also for its potential to enhance community life. It would contribute, complement the town's natural beauty and contribute to the well being of its residents, making Cambria an even more desirable place to live and visit. Thanks, Brian Bryant Lum M D. Well, that is our public comment. With nothing else, and we will move to the next item on the agenda. Okay. Do you want to go to resources? David.
Yeah, not very much to cover right now. I know I've been yeah. I really haven't anything to talk about right now. I'm going to be off with you. I know we've been out, we've conversated and went out and checked out where the markers are for the brisbane ball, stuff that nature out there. Did some surveying of our grounds to figure out how it's going to fit, to know the whole thing about elevating our facility. There is also a plan on the, on East Ranch on relocating it up on top of the shelf. So that's what something I've been doing and we're working with square footage with the water department. How much is going to cost for that? And also what we're working with FEMA and see what we're doing on our instance last flood, that kind of put a delay in a lot of things. But other than that, I mean, we've been trying to keep up with everything as we go on the dirt route right now. But I know we're slow. Brass, it's up in the break for one or two out there on these brands. So we've been out there patrolling once a week right now. The past two weeks has only been once for the cameras. We've been picking up still quite a bit of debris out there. I actually talked to one of the sheriffs this morning and they're thinking about doing a sweep again throughout the area, probably within the next month. Because there is roughly over 18 little areas that we have that are hidden away. And there's about six of them out there inside East Ranch. But other than that, yeah, it's it's no great bits on my end.
Can we ask questions? Like, I don't want to screw up the new format or anything like that.
You know, yeah, we ask questions. The public ask questions next, please.
Okay, so, hey, kudos for this weekend for the camps. I know that's got to be so much work. I walk down there every day and there's so much. And that's so much, that's such a horrible thing for them to have to deal with. And the mowing looks fabulous. Love it. And I'm curious, as we move forward, like where the, because we're moving the pump station, are we moving the buildings as well?
There is one to be removed off that shelf.
Okay, so are we moving something that's going to be about the same size as the previous building onto the shelf?
That's what I'm looking at. I did the square footage. Right now, the water plant that's right there is a little over 7,000 feet, square feet. Our facility without that is 17,000 square feet. So and we're kind of, we're jockeying in there. We're kind of tight, but I know relocating it, that's what I have to go back up to the bench on the ranch, on the ranch up there in measure. I gotta turn around and block it and do a counter and see how we can turn around and get it all to fit in there.
Because some of the storage, like you don't need it anymore, and does the actual pump station have to move? Or does that stay still and the storage moves up a little bit?
The storage, well, the water plant itself needs to be moved. It needs to be ten feet higher. That's a lot of line on that one there. Our facility, I mean, what I'm looking at right now, condensing the shop, losing one bay. Try to accommodate everything that we have, but that on the same notion of shrinking that size, not anticipating what the equipment we're going to need for the ranch. That's one thing that kind of caught me off guard is last week, they kind of like, well, wait a minute, if I'm taking that away, that's a storage facility for the mowers or such different things. So it kind of caught me in that field. But I'm looking at the size and trying to see how we can squeeze it in to where it'll be functional and also presentable to the public at the moment. For that facility.
And I'm just curious, we haven't heard a whole lot about the moving of that, but I just knew it needed, was going to occur, so.
Correct. I know there's a lot up in the air because it is on that flood plain. It was flooded what, twice within the past four years? So that's a big concern, you know, that's for insurance and FEMA and the whole nine yards. I mean, how often are we going to be doing this? Because right now, we're working at a tote. It is a skeleton inside there. There's sheet rock missing four feet down. All throughout, all the offices, the restrooms, we've got sheet rock in the restroom and a door. That's the only we got. So it's, like I said, it's a shell. We're working, you know, they're basically having trucks and that is right now trying to find everything near being situated, so.
And good questions. And it seems, yeah, you know, your, our community park plan for 2014, from what I can tell, does not fully indicate what, what we need for the facilities and resources. So that has to be addressed, meeting, certainly things of meeting operational needs is, as a, is a high priority. And before we take up space with other, other components, this whole thing has to be sorted.
And originally, there was a county storage yard there. We don't have to accommodate the county storage yard anymore, do we?
The one on the back side of the park, that one there, that's something that was a question that I had, because I know it's on the map there on the part left.
And I remember when the county used to store their equipment, it was a physical place, yeah.
And see, now it's something, that's something I kind of mentioned again to the comments about that was due to the fact I know definitely accommodate anything we have. I don't know what the county would actually utilize. I know that went over the county, which I'm very good about it. But warehouse, basically mowers, would be the biggest thing. And then one thing to consider on that one there, I don't know, I think it may be that section or the next section over where it washed out. So that's where all the flooding came through there. So that's a concern that I would have about the elevation that's above it, the slope. If it ever does wash out of that area, it's going to go right back on the ranch on the back side of that. That's a concern that I, that I have on that one. But yeah, I mean, as of right now, for our facility needs, it's too small. Bottom line. But as for future, that was another question that I was having, putting in the track, because it's a 12 foot walkway. That's what you, it's estimated on the trail all the way around in front of that. So now you're judging upon walkers, hikers, and everybody else driving in there. As far as I'm concerned, you know, if we can stay away from there, that would eliminate any accident or anything else of that nature. That's, that's my opinion on that one. But that would be one thing that I would consider relocating that.
It seems like it allows a place for any storage. Yeah. So we'll, we will, you know, collectively, you know, make a revision to that map and indicate what, what goes where. Yeah, is, is a recommendation advisory to the board. Other, other questions for David comments? Great. I know. Thanks. I think that brings us to consent agenda. This is, do we have any corrections to the minutes as as you previewed them? And thanks to Shannon for pulling that together. I believe she informed me that she's, she was not the, you know. She was not the younger, you know, there, there are no assigned secretary at this time, so, uh, at, at the finish your heart, you, uh, pulled that off, so thank you very much.
It was hard.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it is hard, you know, you, you tend to have to go through the recordings. What, uh, what happened, um, what there's, uh, anyway, any, any revisions to it? Do we have a motion to, uh, approve? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Harry.
It's not a problem. Two very minor spelling adjustments. Uh, on, uh. The minutes for August first and August eighth, Don Allen was there, both a public comment. His name is E O N.
Uh, has it right.
Yeah, and also on, uh. August eighth, Barbara Gray is G R A Y.
Okay, and you got that? Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Well, let it be noted that, uh, you can send it to us, approved unanimously?
I'm trying to move and, uh.
Steve, no, that's.
Okay, uh, I'm going to, uh, dive into, uh, five A, the, uh, pros, uh. Discussion regarding the pros committee can possibly come up with a slide. And. This is, uh. That Haley has to the right, it was not in the original package, I didn't get this done until, over the weekend. If you, uh, be, before you go on, if you don't mind, you have, uh, agenda item five A. Talking about this meeting, is that on the, on the board agenda for next week? Is that what the agenda item five A is? Yeah, interesting. Meeting date October third, then you have a.
Oh, okay.
Five A, yeah, what is that? Um. This one, I actually read that.
Right.
Well, what is it? I mean, is it something you're gonna present?
I should start there, yes, yes, that's what I'm gonna present, and I should, uh. Uh, I should start here.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Right, uh, so this is. My version of a chair report for, for this, and, uh, in board agenda topics, you, you'll see, uh, staff prepare a report. To frame what the discussion is about, um. And, uh, some of the standing committee members have started to do this as, uh, as a good practice. Um, so, um, you know, discussion, you know, basically why we're, uh, starting up as a standing committee. Uh, in order to create a uniform structure of its advisory bodies. Uh, the board recently, uh, adopted ordinance revealing the chapter. And the municipal code related to the post-commission.
May, maybe, maybe I've made a mistake, uh, this is thirteen pages long. I don't think we should. We're going to go through it. Uh, what I'm thinking is that you've already submitted this, this is gonna be. Addressed Thursday, so we can kind of dispense with that. I read it, and now are you leaving that through? Your presentation, I don't know, I don't know what, uh. In other words, we aren't gonna change this, right? It's gonna be on the board agenda?
Um, well, no, no, this is. In the agenda for today's. Prose, uh, prose commitment, so this is not the board agenda.
Got it, okay. That's, that's always verified, okay, oh. Your homework.
Okay, so this, this is, this is, this is agenda topic, that this is about, this is not about some other meeting for board or other. Um, so, um. Right, um. Just to kind of clarify what this is about, the, uh, as the report, working board meeting, the. Board appointed the existing post commissioner, uh, to the new post committee.
Uh, again, I don't want to interrupt now. But I, we've read that, I, I read this, okay. Very good. And. Do you want, are we going to read?
Yeah, good God, let's not read it, right? We need to move on, right? There's a game on at noon.
So in this, though, in this agenda item and reading the packet that you gave us under five A. Um, we have the, the bylaws, which I already asked that one question about, and then we have, uh, things like committee officers. So is that the kind of thing that we would take care of right now, or do we wait till we have a, our next member? Um, our new member? To complete these kind of things, um, are we, we can't adjust any of this stuff, any of the bylaws, so. We're just read and understand them, correct?
My, my intent is to understand, so, uh, if you will, uh. Uh, give me a, a little space to, to continue, this will, and this, uh, Steve, may I meet your, uh, your needs for a, for a ten-minute meeting? And, and, you know, and get the exploder deleted out of here.
So you reading the bylaws is gonna make me understand them?
No, no, I'm not gonna read the bylaws.
All right.
But I, we are gonna, uh, talk.
Right, for me to understand something, I have to be mentally engaged in it.
Okay.
Maybe somewhat entertained by whatever it is that I'm learning.
All right.
Right, if I'm bored by it, I'm not learning it, I'm just drifting away, we're learning times.
There are no jokes in there.
Yeah. Right, I'm just, I'm still having a hard time understanding what we're doing. We're all grownups in this room. We should know why we're here. We shouldn't have to be regurgitating information we should all have in our minds.
We, we, well, we should have read it before getting.
Right, yeah. So I'm, I'm trying to, like, right now, I'm like, what are we learning right now? What are we doing and where are we going? My friend over here has got a ton of work. He needs to be out of the room, mowing some grass somewhere.
He's very happy.
I don't think he is.
Okay, so I.
How about we do all?
Jimmy, uh, would you come have a look at the screen? I cannot hit the flash bar. Cross the top. Out of the way, so that I can shift to, so I can get to the, uh. Get to the presentation, but there you go. Yeah, there we go. So, my, my intent here is to, uh, talk through, um. You know, my objectives are this. You know, and, and you, uh, you asked the other day, be very clear on what your objectives are, what you're trying to accomplish. I want to get alignment on what we're doing. And how we're gonna go, go at doing that. And, uh, you know, we're gonna, uh, do that by reviewing. Those documents that, uh, that I, I referenced. And we're not gonna read through them verbatim, but I do expect, uh, to, um. Well. But you wanna make it very clear what, what we're about here. So I wanna start with, with the mission, you know, I'm not pretending that y'all haven't seen the mission before. But. One thing that's very clear is that, uh, everything that, uh, the board does, everything that these committees do. Uh, is, is, is to achieve the, uh, achieve the mission. And, uh, you know, any other agendas we have, we, we leave those, you know, else, we achieve those elsewhere. And what's, uh. I think relevant here is that. You just need to buy its park recreation, uh, in a safe, cost-effective, environmentally sensitive manner. Or values. You know, this is how, um. And this is about as deep as. You said in terms of how we're gonna achieve that mission. So everything that we, as, as a committee. Bring to the board, we have to, you know, be sure of this, um. You know. Those facilities will be safe. Um, the fiscal, fiscal responsibility, um, we've got to. Yeah, it's gotta be, you know, something that we can, we can afford, you know, we can budget somehow and find the funds for. A kind of a service. You know, a lot been done there. Mainly, there may be more than needs to be done in terms of understanding the needs of a entity. Uh, you know, respect, uh, everything we do, uh, we do ethically, uh, honestly, with integrity and patience. Uh, uh, teamwork. We, we need to work together as a team, and in terms of transparency, um, everything we do will be, uh. Uh, open, honest, and, and transparent. Um, and they'll just, uh. And in terms of the strategic goals. This committee has a lot to do with the strategic goal of managing and providing stewardship of district assets, parks, recreation, and open space in a timely, cost-effective, and. Environmentally sensitive manner. Um. So, just want, uh. As a start, I want that to be the focus, you know, I'm sure you, you all know that that mission is, and objectives are there, but, you know, I want, uh, all that to be a clear focus. You know, any questions or comments at this point?
You know, I, I don't, you, you talk about assets and so forth. We have a lot more assets than we've ever looked at, mainly the. So, and the empty lots and so forth, that are the, that everything the. The, uh, district owns theoretically that could be used for recreation. Is that part of our mission? All those empty areas, uh, the, 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 not empty. The land base that the C C S D are, is David managing that stuff by himself, or are we supposed to be doing something with it?
Uh, great question, and.
Because we've never done anything, we have a map that's coming our way some, sometime, uh, it exists, a new map, and. I can look at some of the things we have here, and I look at all, and I think. If there's alternative spaces for a lot of this stuff, we ought to be looking at that land and seeing if we can plug it there. If it's available for that type of use. And I'm thinking of something like even the pool, even the, uh, uh. Dog park, you know, all that kind of stuff that seems to fit, you know, in a slightly different category than the. What we have in limited space on our park, so if that's the case. We don't have a clue where this stuff is, so when, when are we gonna chase these issues?
The next slide.
Good, good stuff there, okay, let's go to the next slide.
But before we go there, okay, this is a, a big point, and as I interpret, um, our charge, uh, OS, open spaces. Um. Is everything within C S D jurisdictional boundaries, uh, so if someone at some point tells me that it's narrower than that. So, but that's not the ways, I, I believe this committee has charged for all of that, and, 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 uh, David, um. Um, we, we have that, uh, map available. You, you've already got it?
Yeah, that's the one that I have, that I've just currently, uh, I've actually had to put away. So I turned around and brought it out, saying.
So if we get a, take a break, we'll put that up, um, I, I'd ask David for, for that map.
Okay.
Everything that we own because, hmm, possibilities.
Okay, now, how about other people's open space? Green space, all those other things in the community of Cambria, that's kind of the master plan issue. That you were talking about, can you find a copy of the master plan? Well, there is one, I, I copied a thing and you can barely read it, but. If we look at trails, we are looking at connectivity of everything.
Everything.
And that would be useful, and the, the fact that they do their thing, we do our thing, and we don't mix, and in fact. But we don't have any money to do it either, that's part of it, we, there's, we can't. We have no money. And there are poor people with a lot of land, we, we don't even have cows to put on.
The three important things there. The control and influence, we, the, the board and us in an advisory role. We, we have a level of control over anything that is within C S D. C S D property, now, everything else we can influence, and so absolutely.
I mean, I would, I mean, I know I've said this many times before, but I keep saying it, that, um, we, uh. The C C S D has farmed out responsibility for a lot of these open spaces to five oh one C threes. And the community does not have input into how those open spaces are managed, unless someone attends the meeting, can find out and attends the meeting. So I'm hoping, really hoping that we can offer at least space here at PROS. For those five oh one C threes to come and tell the community what they're doing, so that it's broadcast out to the broader public. And there's a lot of visibility and then continuity, and we can sync together and work together, so. Like, if we add that component, identifying what we control and helping to communicate. What's happening in the world of open space in our area.
Uh huh.
For dissemination, disseminate communications.
So, you know, in the, uh, the future agenda, uh, topic, let's, let's list those other organizations that, uh, other entities within this area. That we want to engage, uh, because this is gonna be critical, you know, we can't do it all on hotels.
Uh, I like the first sentence in one point two says, consider only district-related issues approved and assigned by the board. Before I go on, the next sentence. Is that I think that's one of the problems we've had in a long time. We're jumping from one thing to another, and I was looking at that. Saying, okay, board, tell us what you want us to focus on, get it done. This ban or not, and, and then. Board will direct us to something else, but then it goes on and says, or. Issues within the review of each committee, now we're talking about everything, so which, which do you, what, what do you think is more efficient?
There you go.
Oh, it, it seems, we, we couldn't do just one thing, because that would only one thing a year we'd do.
Hmm.
We always have to have a five categories working at them separately, because you've got none of them move fast. And everything you look at is almost ten years out, if you're talking about money and grants and so forth, like. Under the bridge, under the, the, the creek, you know, it's ten years away, and that's fast.
So we're gonna have a list of things we want to get done, that's way longer than we can get done in any one committee. But to Jim's question, uh, and you notice I put some boxes around those, because those are quite critical, um, so first, you know. Um, yeah, this committee is advisory to the board, just as the, uh, post-commission, no, first paragraph, advisory to the board of directors. Uh, so, uh. We don't have the authority to execute anything, but what this committee recommends has a lot of impact, a lot of impact on what gets done in this district. Uh, well, yeah, one point two, what does standing committee do? Um, and, and it's, and it's two things, quite simply put, um, within its scope. Whatever has been assigned by the board, and you saw at a recent board meeting, um. An expectation that this committee discusses whether, to what extent additional survey is needed. For community park plan needs, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's coming soon. Uh. And to me, underlying that is. Um, all right, what information do we have? Truly take stock of that information, and based on the alternatives we have before us. What additional information would we need? If our answer is, we have no need for other information, then we don't need another survey. If we look at that set of information and say, hmm. We do need more information, then we gather that information in the most efficient manner we know, and. Survey is likely, I don't know the outcome of that, yeah. Um, but that's my thoughts about how we're gonna get there. But now this second line, uh, that, uh, Jim, uh, Jim. Like, or issues within the proof view of the committee, in other words, within the context of. Parks, recreation, and open spaces within the C C S D jurisdictional boundaries, quite large. Anything and everything that. Is in the scope of parks, recreation, and open space, um. If there are issues that members of this committee are aware of, bring them up, and it is our charge to address those issues. And bring those to the board, uh, and, uh, you know, to commit your, uh, passion for trails, uh, I just, uh. I'm excited about that as well, and, you know, keep that up and, uh, any way we can, you know, connect, uh, connect the spaces better, um, but, uh, anyway. What, uh, the Jim's question, it is both. Right, and it's, uh, it'd be narrower if it were only issues assigned by the board. In fact, uh, some committees have been kind of, uh, steered in that direction in the past, but it, uh, has been for, for the years I've been involved, both, both scopes. Moving on, any other questions on that? So also, under what we do, um, just call attention to, um, the role of this group, you know, if you read, um, recommends plans of action to the board, yada, yada, um, and facilitate, facilitate communication with the residents to meet those needs. The primary deliverable of this group, um, as much as, uh, I mean, I, I enjoy my Wednesday mornings on the ranch because we've got shovels at hand and we're getting it done, uh, but that, uh, unfortunately isn't the role of this committee. Fortunately, what is, is, you know, developing plans that we recommend to the board. So, uh, our primary output is going to be, plans that we present to the board for, uh, for their approval and, and execution. Questions, comments, reactions?
Recommend plans of actions is, we've recommended one plan of action. Actually, the skate park was a plan of action. I guess somebody's recommended, uh, can't say it came from the pros, but it ended up here, but the, um, the only thing we did was a skate park or the Frisbee golf thing, which, we, has been recommended and will probably rot with everything else, but the question is, what did they do with this? Uh, what do we recommend? Because they, it's, it's primarily a money and maintenance issue for them. And everything we do will be that rated on that money and maintenance issue. So are we all, do we only bring money and maintenance if, if we have the money? Oh, then we can recommend it, or do we recommend it and let them find the money? I get a lot of plans.
Yeah, it's a good question because we brought a project to the board that had money and maintenance covered. Um, and we don't, uh, and that was a question I asked the board, uh, a few times was, what happens next? Um, skate park happened next because Julie stayed on it and wouldn't let it go. You know, we're, we'd love to see the Frisbee Golf as, as the Pro's Commission. It was a project that we recommended after looking at it for months. And now it's not going anywhere. So, uh,
Haven't gotten there yet.
I just think we would like to know, what are the steps involved after we hand over a plan? What happens?
Well, um, from the context of the community park plan.
So that's gonna be one plan we're gonna create.
One component.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be, uh, you know, in the perimeter, um, reaction from the board was very positive. Right, uh, a lot of questions, um, a lot of discussion from the board, I heard on, sounds great. How does it all fit together? It sounds like our charge is to create the plan that shows how it all fits together.
A community park plan?
Yes.
Yeah. And I get that, and as I'm saying, I'm using that as an example, but we had to kind of figure that out between the lines. Um, that wasn't just said, so I think when we present a plan in the future of the CCSD, it's, uh, I guess we even think, I mean, just throwing it out there so we're thinking about it. What do we expect the CCSB to do next? What are we hoping to achieve? What, we need action items, and I think that even just in everything we're doing right now, for recording action items, so that we're actually following through on some things. Um, it's kind of critical to this whole piece. Because that would give us hope that we're not just sitting here doing this month after month. And coming up with great ideas that go absolutely nowhere and maps that die and trails that go to nowhere and sidewalks that go to nowhere. Um, we would like to see what happens next and how we accomplish that.
Nineteen ninety-four plan was a good example.
And the two thousand three, and the two thousand nine, and the two thousand fourteen.
But this one will be different.
One hundred percent.
This is gonna be the different one.
That's what I'm.
If we all put our energy into it.
And, and I appreciate the sarcasm because it's useful.
Uh, and the people who just moved here can have a big opinion about it.
Seen it.
We need a bathroom. Right, I've been in this the whole time. It's the bathroom. That's the next step. We can all do whatever, but the county said the bathroom, so once that's there.
He said it was the bathroom and not the bathroom.
Well, but, but when the bathroom is there, then they can't say this or that.
And I'm not expecting an answer to any of this. I, I, this is just something that I'd like us to make sure that we.
Yeah, for recognition of, let's get that preparation on the table. And, uh, and recognize that, and my experience, and I, I've, uh, you know, in my history, I, I worked as a project management consultant. You know, worked with lots of teams, and I, you know, and sure, there were, um, some number of, preliminary project plans that got to that funding stage that didn't get approved for good reasons. Um, but, uh, essentially, everything else that I've been, has been executed, um, so I, I, I share your lack of interest creating any plan that does not get executed. I've got no energy for that, so I, I appreciate.
Can I make a counterpoint to that? Every team you worked with was paid. Everybody on the team was paid, and this team is not paid. That makes a completely different scenario.
It does, and what that means is that you're doing this out of passion, out of, uh, uh, committed to the community, which to me has a lot more power than someone didn't pay to do a job.
That's why wasting time is a more offensive, egregious error than if you're wasting time of a project manager that's getting paid.
So let's move on.
All right.
Well, well said. Oh, yeah, okay, uh, thank you. So I, uh, stop sharing?
Um, he, he has the ability as a panelist to unmute himself.
So, uh, unmute yourself?
Yeah, unmuted, um, thanks, everybody. I just wanted to follow up on the restroom conversation. Um, so Tim Carmel reached out to Trevor Keith, who is the boss of Shawnee and Kip at the county. Without a doubt, per the top, the restroom has to be in before anything gets put in the ground. To include, um, the, the disc golf, um, baskets and everything. So I know there was some back and forth, um, between Ray and I know Shannon, and I said conversations and Ray's had conversations, um, but we went all the way to the top, and, and we got the finality of it, which is, um, the restroom needs to be in. With that, we do have an update on some of the restroom progress, uh, the fiscal any rents restroom. Um, we've got about a two hundred and fifty day lead time on construction of the prefab restroom. We're estimating twenty, could be as early or as late as twenty twenty-five or mid to late twenty twenty-four. So that.
That's why you get.
And we have a whole new board and we start all of these again. That is so depressing. And to take that horrible road to that weird parking lot, this giant, to a dog park, and have a bathroom in the middle of it, it's gonna take us two or three years to construct, is just insanity. And the county.
I wish. I wish I had better news, as the saying says, don't shoot the messenger, um, you know, I, 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 um, have been working with our utilities manager and we're uncovering, um, some things that maybe weren't done the most efficiently, which has dragged us out a bit, and so, um, we're trying to fix it. Um, some of it is the lead time on purchasing that, prefab restroom, which can't be purchased until we get the permitting done, and the permitting is still on the table at the county. Um, so, so the permitting delays the ordering of the prefab restroom that has a two hundred and fifty day lead time. So I wish I had better news for you, um, I wish that we could stick, you know, and, and move forward with the, the Frisbee Golf. Um, if it wasn't for the restroom, it's depressing, I understand it, but, um, our team's working hard, our team's working hard on pushing it through, but it is bureaucracy, there is red tape. And I wish I could fix it with, with the wave of a wand, but I, I'm, we're, we're, we're stuck at the moment, so. I'm sorry for the bad news.
Now, thank you, brother, and hold on, Jim, uh, so, so that means from the point of, uh, permit application.
Uh, I'm sorry, say, say that one more time, Director Thomas?
So is that, um, is that two hundred and fifty days from the point of permit application?
I, I, it would be approval of the permits before we purchase the prefab restroom. Uh, the, the prefabricated restroom is, I think, Haley, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're talking two fifty, uh, two seventy-five, which would need to be purchased, which, which is the cost of the prefab with that lead time, and in order, in order to do that, we would have to have the permitting approved and, and ready to go. And then we're also talking about weather patterns and the foundation and things of that nature that, that can delay things too, so, you know.
Okay, well, the good news is that, uh, the good news is that we're getting, uh, a realistic timeline that, we're, we very likely are going to be able to plan with, uh, obviously, um, your, you, my rations right there with yours, you know, we're not crazy about this, but, um, and there's, uh, there's some, uh, therapeutic value in venting, but let's, uh, uh, let's not consume any more, uh, of our time with the venting.
I, I would rather do a little sort of therapeutic, uh, little therapeutic venting.
Can't we build our own freaking bathroom?
And at this point, that would be.
Get a bid for it. I'm, I'm just saying, two. A contractor could build that thing in about two months.
Yeah, but they have to approve plans.
Okay. It sounds like something that will, will, I'll do some more. As individuals, they can bring to the board, but I hadn't been aware that, uh, the construction of the bathroom was, the responsibility of the post committee, uh, will work.
And, and there's nothing we can do against the county in this ruling.
Yeah, like, somebody go and push him around up into, like, the office.
But it's still two hundred and fifty days for them to make it, even if we were to start, they were to build it today, it still wouldn't be here till next summer.
So let's, um, let's adjust, though, that we, we know we have, we, kind of acknowledged, but, you know, we're not getting anywhere, we're not getting anywhere right now.
Look at all the time we're gonna have for a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't have to talk about anything out there for two years now again.
I'd like to change the locations as we're waiting. Anyway.
No, no, it's not, man, it's not anybody, it's just life.
It's, it's Cambria and the county and the Wayne County and the street of Cambria historically. This is, this has been a constant.
All right, can I belabor this point now? Thursday, hey, Thursday, they had a county parks meeting. Right, and we didn't go, are they anything? Are we not using them the way we should? We keep talking about these planner guys, right, these people in the bureaucracy, but what about the county parks people?
I met with Tanya Richardson yesterday.
And who is she?
She is the director of county parks, and, right.
She's, she's the, uh, paid person. I'm talking about the five guys on the county parks board. Pandora, Connor, Nash, some girl from, uh, uh, you know what I'm saying?
Do we need to start going to that?
Well, I don't, I've gone to them and they're a little funky too, right? They're just an advise, well, they're just an advisory board too, working with the pickleball from Los Osos. You know, but do they have, they got leverage with the county supervisors?
Well, the base projects actually happen.
Well, you know, at some level, we're just floundering.
Well, what is their mission? Is it to support county outings or things, or are they just another?
Yeah, they had a ad on the radio about how they're bragging about all the different counties.
They work with, they've got the golf courses, they got chalk and dairy, and they do, they've got a trails thing that they work on pretty heavily. You know, but they're looking to, and I'm just curious if they've got leverage and support that would help facilitate our goals.
Okay, let, let's bring this to a close, and we're, we're gonna, uh, clearly have a topic on the agenda, uh, where, our, I wouldn't call it plan of attack, but, uh, you know, what, what steps we're gonna take to see what we can get done sooner than, um, this point in time, so, uh, so moving on with this, and, uh, thank you, Matt, that was, that was useful because, my philosophy about, seriously, my philosophy about conflict is, if it's there, let's get it on the table, let's talk about it, um, it's, uh, it may not be pretty, but you've got to deal with it, um, but.
I just want to clarify, I want people in the room to know that I'm not like upset because I'm so desperate for Frisbee Golf, having never played Frisbee Golf before in my life. Um, I just, we wanted to do something for the community. That was an easy thing to do. Don't mind going back to the drawing board and bringing it in as part of a community park plan, another plan. Don't mind doing that, but, uh, to find out that we have to, even if we were to create a, a plan that encompassed Frisbee Golf, that we can't implement it for two or three years is heartbreaking, but I just want you guys to know that. I'm not pushing because I want disc golf so desperately.
Yeah, you, you said that before, Claire, and we, 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 yeah, we, but, okay, uh, moving on, uh, Danny, get a good bylaws, you know, I'm gonna draw a few key points out from this. And, and, and by the way, you know, they're like, like, why are you taking, why are you dragging us through this? I mean, come on, guys, why are we, why are you dragging us through slides and, and showing us that any company bylaws? Well, the reason is, we are gonna follow them. Um, no, my actual, uh, my experience, um, uh, I started playing soccer as a, as a coach, you know, so I, I figured I needed to, uh, uh, once I started, got roped into, uh, coaching my, uh, my son's soccer team, I real quick got on a soccer group so I could learn how to play the game, um, uh, realized that to figure out, you know, uh, figure out the offside rules, you better become a referee and know how, know how to referee a game, so you know what the referees are doing, so, um, uh, my point is, these are the, uh, kind of rules of the game that we're playing here as a committee, and, um, uh, I intended here to him is, as well as I can figure out, we, um, so, well, just making it clear, um, Chair, Vice, uh, Chair and Secretary, we will, I'm intending, but we'll, um, we'll fill those next month, uh, after you listen to, like, what my expectations are. Like, then you can scratch your head and say, do I want to do this or not? Fair enough, um. And by the way, right, you, you probably know this, but I vote only in the event of a tie, um, and here's the, uh, the rest of the roles. Vice, uh, Vice Chair, you know, basically fills in and carries on in that same intent, uh, you know, and the, the Vice Chair, I, I, the expectation is that, um, we know, Vice Chair, if I'm, I would, uh, follows, you know, these bylaws as rigorously as I would. The, uh, the secretary records the minutes in, uh, action forum. Submits the draft minutes, um, and, uh, the minutes as action minutes, um, really don't go into a lot of discussion. More can. More can be put into the minutes, but um, the uh, the bare, bare minimum is. It was here, date and time, the motions, who, who motioned, who seconded, and and the votes, and the action statement. How we work together, um. And the guidelines. We, it's pretty clear, you know, the Brown Act uh prevails. And our role is protecting and withholding the public interest, uh, and uh. And we may have. Particular things that we're after, but, you know, just like, uh, you know, again, you said it very well. You know, it's not that you're after disco, you want to get something done for the community, and that's, you know, that's exactly what it says. You see that? Um. Um, many members conduct themselves with courtesy towards uh, you know, one another and staff and the public. Uh, at, at the meetings, um. Uh. Fun story, you know, when I I met with with Steve on the uh, at East Ranch and uh, he asked me, now, do I, do I need to, you know. Keep it inside the lines while we're talking? I said, oh, heck no, you know, let's, let's talk, let's be real. But, you know, in in the public, we uh, we have to conduct ourselves with some element of decorum. Um. Agenda procedure. Um. I'm charged with preparing the agendas, so um. Uh, it, Haley does a fabulous job, and we are so fortunate to have her assisting. Our committee uh with pulling the agenda, uh agendas together, she is such experienced, and to make it worse. Um, if we have, you know, um, you know, any meeting on Tuesday. Um. You know, she has to distribute the agenda packets, seventy-two hours for the Brown Act, but um. To give her some. Uh, some work time to review, uh, prepare, um, that has to be to her the Monday prior. So, a week ago yesterday, I sent input to her.
If we have an agenda item we'd like to put on, we don't go through you, we go through Haley?
Uh, no, go through me.
Okay.
Get it tonight, I can, you know, incorporate it, and it'll be helpful if I can get it before the weekend.
Uh.
That I need to get it.
Before the weekend of the meeting?
Uh, no.
The previous weekend of the meeting.
Here we are today, I don't mean over the weekend, it's it's too late.
Okay.
Um, a week ago Monday.
A week ago Monday.
I I get the input daily. So that prior, you know, Thursday or Friday, it'd be real nice to get whatever you want to bring in. So, um, you know, I can have an agenda that holds together. Uh. And I, uh, because whatever's on the agenda, the public expects us to to accomplish, because they become, you know, come here for that. And so I don't want to put more on the agenda than we can actually accomplish. But at the same time, want to want to be aggressive in our agendas, so. Good question. Any other questions on on that? So it'll be, it'll be helpful, yeah, that's basically what we can advance. Basic stuff. Um. But right, you know, you know, this is important, information's changed. Um. As, you know, it needs to be distributed through, through Haley, um. It's best if we don't show up and, you know, hand out sheets of paper to each other, it's, it's not how it was supposed to function as a. As a committee, and instead, uh, you know, ideally come, come to me, you know. Something will be last minute. We'll deal with that.
Okay, so if we've got masks, we want to send them out at the same time we put them on the agenda, then you'll print them out and put them in the packets?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, you know, you would take whatever action we need now.
Okay.
Uh, the, the meetings, you know, bargaining for a two hour period. Um. And if we're gonna go over, that requires four of this vote of the committee to extend. Um, and uh, uh. I don't want to be doing that, it's to the extent that the board does.
Yeah.
Um. Rosen roots, uh, Rosenberg's rules of order are the kind of playing rules, and so. Just uh, just a few, few comments on that, no, any, any questions on or other reaction stuff that we've had for? So. Like. Why aren't we subject to the Brown Act? My, um, and. You know, Jim brought up an interesting point, it's go, a committee, you know. Aren't we a committee that that finish our scope and we disband? Well, no, we're a standing committee, uh, but um. What Jim was describing there is an ad hoc committee, uh, you know, any group that is formed, uh, that's not a forum of the governing body that. Um, has a limited duration and uh, limited scope. Delivers that scope and disbands. You know, it's an ad hoc committee and. Uh. And. Then, as long as it's not a forum of the governing body, it is not subject to the Brown Act, and. You, you can get things done more efficiently in certain ways. Uh, but. In the. In the committee that has continuing subject matter jurisdiction and a, a being scheduled fixed by charter resolution is. Um, a legislative body subject to the Brown Act, so that's why we are. You know, we may both, both lose tests. Um, and. Going through this.
Yeah.
Um. It's probably worth uh. Worth the, it's like just to recognize that, like, what is the Brown Act? I mean, it's a law that was passed nineteen fifty-three. Wow. Good year. Uh, please, I'll make thanks, like, a very good year. Um. And, and, and. There it's, so like there, it is just not bothering. Um. And it's there for a reason, because um, some small proportion of really bad actors, um. Uh, you went up with laws that um. Have to protect the, you know, protect the public. So boards and other agencies, in other words, standing committee, conduct the people's business. It's the intent of this law that their actions be taken openly and their deliberations be conducted openly. Uh. And this is, this is that, that first paragraph, you know, the people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain, retain control over the instruments they have created. Is, what I emphasize, we are doing the work of the public, representing the public. Um. Uh, key provisions. The meetings are open to public. Even meeting of. Any gathering of this group with minor exceptions is uh, uh, is this legislative body. Uh, anytime you deliberate or take action and, you know, anything within the jurisdiction of this committee. Uh. The conversation about, you know, the conversation about this can be completely without concussion on the serial meetings, but any time. Uh, a forum of this group talks about some set of issues amongst themselves, they have, in fact, um. Had a meeting and that, uh, you know, so that's. Uh, that's why when we form ad hoc committees, we form an ad hoc committee with less than a quorum, um. Uh, and the, the ad hoc committee is not going to. Take action, ad hoc committee's gonna perform a specific school work, bring it back to this group, and then it's uh, then it's all. That, that enables the, um. So. I'm ready, work get done very efficiently. But that, this is worth uh, bringing up, uh, responding to the public. You know, they. This is often um. Misstated to some extent, someone from the public asks a question, comments, and this comment is, it's on the agenda, we can't discuss it, period, in this story. Well, mostly true, but. Uh, though action or discussion can be undertaken and any agenda, any item not on the agenda. Except that members of a legislative body, that our committee. May briefly respond to statements made or questions, and in addition. On your own initiative, in response to questions posed by the public. Anyone in this committee can. Uh, ask a question for clarification, make a brief and un, statement. So, um. That is the. Kind of sort of part of our public comment, so it's uh. It's not just. We, we can go a little further than thank you for your comment. Is what, uh, is what this reads. Comments about that, it's. This is the often misunderstood aspect of what I found.
No, I I guess go back during the meeting, the public participation can happen before or after, but it is scheduled or if not scheduled. Public participation happens when?
Ah, so that is uh, the discretion of the chair of, you know, in case, in case of the board, uh, the board president, in the case of. You know, uh, the committee, you know, is, is a. Determined by the chair. Where. We have a topic, we introduce the topic. And when do we want to hear the public comment? Often, if there's a report to be made, it's, it's good to hear the report, where second ad hoc. Uh, committee has done a whole bunch of work, let's hear about that work, um, and. Um, generally, I want to hear a public comment. Then before the board, uh, before the, the committee does any deliberation. Uh, but it, but it certainly has to happen before any decisions are made. The. Yes, so.
Yeah.
So Rosenberg's rules of order, um. Yeah, I'm not a master of this decision-making or this agenda sequence, um, you know, this will be something I'll be getting better at, but. Uh, the process, you know, we, you boil down that ten pages, you know. Chair announces the agenda item, invites people to report, and. Right, that version of what was in the agenda packet on this was my version of our report. Um, ask, ask committee about for questions. Invite public comment. So generally, the rough, you know, Rosenberg's rule of order would say. The questions from the committee first, then bring in the public. And. Then only when appropriate to invite a motion, then we go through that process. Let's. Questions about that, uh. And. Yeah, and then there is substitute motion and friendly amendments, and I've. Got that printed out, so if we need, I'll refer to that so we can get it right. A few of my expectations as chair, um, last, uh, last two bits of information here. You know, you know, please, go, show up thoroughly prepared, um, for every meeting, except for you, you can't be here for excuse absences. That means you've. Read the, read the agenda, you, uh. Uh, whatever, you know, we're in, that reports, you've stated determined to what the board is up to that affects us. Um, focus on achieving the, the, the mission of the CCSD. That's what we are advisory, what we're charged to do. Um. And again, if you have other agenda or or motivation, look elsewhere to achieve those objectives, um. Uh. And, yeah, do the work at least to fit our decisions, and. Me, now they. From my world of decision-making, I, you know, I'd like to see things that, that I'm al- always trying to bring in, uh, as we uh. Bring something to a decision is, have we framed the mission properly, have right alternatives, if we consider all alternatives, we have right information. Um, do we, do we have a good understanding of the values and trade-offs? Um. Rarely is just one alternative better than everything else, um, so, uh. We have that, we have a good analysis of uh, of the information to show which alternatives are better, and. Um, whatever course of action we're recommending is, uh. You know, does that make sense considering the decision-makers and the stakeholders? So this is, uh, this is not out of the Brown Act, it's not out of Rosenberg, this is just, you know, this is my view of the world of decision-making. But, other questions before I wrap this?
Um, fine, the, the question I have is, uh, the uh. I guess when we have talked about the agenda, we never talked about what time we were going to be finished with this meeting. And you've got a lot of good work back here about this plan, which I was hoping that's what we were gonna do today. Are you suggesting that we're going to be here for another two hours, or are we leaving at twelve, or? What is gonna happen?
Yeah, my expectation is that we'll, uh, unless, uh, this group wants to continue, but a twelve, twelve o'clock noon happens to be lunchtime pretty much, uh. Uh, universally, so I, I expect we'll end at noon, wherever we are, that's where we'll get to.
So we'll take another whole meeting to go through the, the, the last fif- fifth, ten pages of this stuff, which is the meat of what I thought we were gonna do today.
Well, we have three years, so.
That's true.
Yeah. Well said.
Good point.
It is. That, and, well, no, well said.
Yeah, but I, I found stuff here that I thought was very good, it was excellent, uh, write-up, you did a great job. Um. But, you know, we really. Sort of, we've read all that stuff. We need to get onto real stuff.
Okay.
And. The, the frankly, the biggest eye-opener that dug in that whole thing is this paragraph on page seventeen reads. A portion of the east ranch is designated for a community park, which will be the only active recreation area of the ranch. The desired development of the park will be conducted through separate planning effort, the community park is not within the management realm of this plan, that has to do with the plan that referred to the fiscal need, branch bench.
What pages?
That's on page seven to thirteen.
Yeah, you're a little. So we are, we are on topic, uh, uh, five C, and, um. Yeah, I think what, what you're pulling us in, uh, given the remaining half hour we have.
Yeah.
Um, or the, shall we defer the discussion of ad hoc committees?
I, we skip discussion of ad hoc committees, we've really done all that.
Yeah.
And we've been there, through there, been there, done that.
Can I ask a question, because our, we had a former ad hoc committee, is that no longer in this transition?
That's a good point.
Because we never ended it.
So, um, uh, and I'm asking this because Kermit started talking about agenda topic five C.
Right.
Let's stay on the same page, uh, we've, uh, you know, we're around on the agenda topic five A, so now, uh. We, the next, next topic, if we follow the agenda, is uh, the ad hoc committee updates to here. Yeah, take inventory of. What ad hoc committees. Were active, I mean, I, and I can run through all of the. Agenda topics, but, I mean, minutes, recordings, but generally, just, you know, talk about it.
If we're, if it's a concern right now, is we don't need to hear anything, except what happens to our committee.
Right, uh, so what I'm asking. Five B, my question is, what, um. What committees, what ad hoc committees were active as of the, the last uh, regular. Uh, meeting of the, the post commission on the, on the.
Actually, actually, we did have two, we had an ad hoc member, Julie, which was going to be with the, the pros commission, it was.
Yeah, we had our recreation. Ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
That's only one we have, though, correct?
Well, then we have the ad hoc committee for the uh, uh, planning of the recreations. Group. The three alternatives we came up with, but Julie.
Yeah, but that's. Yeah, but that's.
Yeah, but Julie was an ad hoc committee for the state park.
Okay, so is the skate park still an ad hoc committee then?
She was an ex officio.
Ex officio, well, okay.
She was not an ad hoc committee member.
All right, Dave, you had. You raised your hand like.
I forgot.
So I guess we need to, A, identify what ad hoc committees we have.
Yes.
And then whether or not they're going to continue. Which I recommend, we, as far as I can see, we just have the one. Our recreation ad hoc committee. Which I would recommend that we end. Because now the next phase, in order to get their recommendation implemented, would be to create a community park plan.
Mm-hmm. So are you saying, end the ad hoc?
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
And if you need an ad hoc. They get a new.
Yeah, because I want the ad hocks to have like a real mandate. So that we're actually moving forward, weirdly, um, and I love the idea of the ad hocks because we get to be messy.
Yes. You can be messy, yeah. Um, and, and, and that way you can move fast, get that summary work done, bring it together. So, so what I'm hearing is that there are no, uh, in the recreation catalog. Either, it's worked, I've seen the report, a lot of them. And, um. So there are currently no active ad hoc committees, so we'll, uh. Next time we come to that, we'll be forming new ones, uh, so there will. At the next meeting, there won't be a report of, um, because they're currently on.
But we can make it an, an agenda item to suggest ad hoc committees, those trails would be a great one.
Yeah.
Start.
That is, that is a good idea, and on any topic, we can, we can form an ad hoc committee to do some scope work.
If it's not on the agenda, but. We, we can make a decision on something when it's not on the agenda.
That doesn't, that's, that's not taking action.
Okay. Forming an ad hoc committee is not taking an action.
Correct. Your action.
Good to know.
Our recommendation to the board is actually, but, yeah, it's. It's a little weird, okay. So that's, that's really what I needed to hear on five B, so. From hearing, there are no other active, uh. Ad hocks, so we'll get, um. We'll get knee deep into, um, or ankle deep into, uh, this current state discussion. And then, uh, eleven fifty is, you know, we, we stop, we take stock, we put in items. Value the meeting and then return. Um, so.
Uh, when we see Davis, Davis man. And.
In your comment, Michael, just real quick, I know this is a problem, but the words community park plan. It could, could be the words, the verbal description of it, or it could be the map. It also be a trouble as a community park then. We need both, the description of that, we need the map.
Absolutely.
Particularly now, we need the map, because the old map is like current.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, we're all waiting, even, I know it's not a community park, but I have necessarily seen the map that David has, uh, I guess CCSD O and profit.
Right.
That's like a picture is worth a thousand words, a map is really needed before you understand. The community park plan as a whole.
Yeah. Yeah, well, well said, well said.
So, I would say for five C, my big takeaway after reading all of this, and I'm thinking just the same way, is, um, identifying. I think I was actually more confused after reading this, because the depth of the documents is staggering, um.
Well, that's good.
That, what are our foundational documents? What is our plan when we do the next plan? To, uh, make sure that we have identified that we are overriding documents, because there's no, right now, there's. Documents created and then another document created, but there's no, there's no hierarchy of documents. Um, which is creating a whole ton of confusion. And along the same line, there's no hierarchy of maps. So there's no document control. Um, and there's no, obviously, map control, which actually we consider document control. Um, so it's hard to know how to come up with any ideas or solutions for anything. And you did a great job distilling it, but I still don't know which are guiding documents.
Right, right, because one cannot discern.
From that.
That collection.
No.
Yeah. Um, so that is key point, uh, so ergo, uh, you know. We, uh, we need to produce. Whatever. This committee sees as. The set of information that. Collectively is the plan we intend to execute. And. I would see, uh, as, uh, Crowley mentioned, I, there's got to be a, um, there's got to be a description of each component. And I think also there needs to be. Reference, uh, set of references, and for example, they, um. There's a CDP, um, when I met with Sean Young, um. You know, she made the point that the coastal development plan that was issued. Uh, had a provision that said, um. Um, this plan is valid for. Um, for a period of twelve years.
Right.
Um, unless, um, any component of this plan is. Uh. Permit approved and. Construction begins, that's all it takes, well, we've done. The park, uh, parking lot, we've done the, uh, the dog park, so. Uh, she explained that based on that, that CDP is. By, and if we stay essentially within the context of that, um. Permitting is simply construction permits. So that's a good thing.
Or land use permit, if we change something, right?
If we change something, we go back, yeah.
Just land use though, not like.
Right, uh, and some things, uh, will require a significant coastal development permit, right, to the, so. Obviously, the aquatic center is. You know, she advises that will open up everything, you know, you'll need, uh, E I R, new, uh. Coastal development permit, um, and so I'll appeal to the coastal commission, um.
Well, and the aquatic center is interesting, at least to, as pros is concerned. Because we, like, do we discuss the aquatic center, we have never seen a presentation, we know nothing, so unless I went as an. Individual and watched the CCSD board meeting, I know nothing about the aquatic center, it has never been presented.
Wait, she, I think, two months ago.
It wasn't presented.
It wasn't presented.
We have, we know that the community wants one.
Uh, yes.
There was no presentation.
There's no presentation.
We have no documents, we have no, I have no insight.
No acreage.
Um. Thank you for bringing that up, yeah, uh, at the last board meeting, the campaign for quarters made a presentation to the board. The, at the conclusion, uh, President Dean listed, uh, a number of factors that, uh, would need to be addressed. Um, and advised the, uh, you know, the group to. Come back first to pros and then, and then to the board with, uh, a presentation that addresses all of those issues.
So will that be, is that a way to get access? For your project to go straight to the board and bypass us, is, is that like going to be a common occurrence, because that seems like, um, a precedent was set.
Um, well, the, the board certainly took no action on it, yeah, it's, it's a good point, uh. Yes, um, so, and I, and I, I, I mean, this is appropriate for an interaction of, of committee and the public comments, so please, Lord.
Yeah, the one, the one comment I want to make on, the, uh, the open space lots that were hidden to us by the San Luis Obispo Conservancy. There is no time limit on it, and it's very heavy conservation easement, there's no. Areas to put pools or anything on those lots, it's passive recreation. And there's no time limit on that, it's, those lots are forever.
Oh, lots given by the land conservancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now.
Right.
That's probably true, is that every piece of parcel, every parcel out there, that same con- uh, designation, or are there other parcels acquired at different times? That would be a different.
There's only, there's, there's a list of parcels, parcel numbers that are covered by the conservation easement.
Okay.
Or easements, there's a number of the conservation easements. Which have, there's different parcel numbers, um, and then, but there are other properties of the CCSD, you know, that don't have conservation even on it.
Okay.
There are lots more open, well, some of them may be restricted, uh, ever being developed. But they don't have to be maintained in a natural state.
Yeah, so are, how, how available is that information, is, is it? The map, I assume they're going to give us is in parcel numbers, and when we go to.
Haven't seen the map, I'd like to see the map.
Yeah, and then we go to information that you have, or that's been developed that, that shows the. The, the, the.
I think there's three main conservation laws, not including fiscal need, right, Missouri, it's three major conservation easement, they list the begins. They're covered by that particular conservation. CCSD, I guess. That information. It, it sends some of it to. The land, I think.
Mm-hmm.
The conservation event, the current. And it said, the, usually the list of APNs that are covered, uh, these are. Attached of an appendix or an attachment to the actual conservation. Yeah, it's size of this parcel number recovered by those.
There's exact maps, it's two thousand and ten also.
That you guys have been working with, but isn't there an updated map?
What I was referring to, there was a vacant lot, uh, a set in the report that was prepared before the CCSD. Two thousand and ten, that is color coded, that's to show which parcels are, or can serve. But I don't think it distinguishes between, well, maybe it does, between. Parcels of the CCSD homes that are restricted in some way, but not covered by the conservation, and I don't remember exactly, but. But, and that's, that's a good document to list, actually, have all these maps showing on different parcels, and they're color coded. Showing the conservation value. Of the lots that are not under conservation.
So we have to find that.
So, I mean, CCSD has, this was, we're, important for the.
Where is the government?
Uh, on the, on the CCSD, the only stuff that I've gotten from them, because that's what I've been working with all the open lots, with the weed abatement and stuff of that nature, this. What I have here, this is what they gave me, I actually have it in a binder now, and but, right here, I'm around, they're all different years that it was donated to the CCSD, it doesn't have everything down. Like you're explaining, um.
I, I haven't seen what you have, but.
Yeah, correct, from what you guys have sent over, I got a copy of it, it was dead on, I'm like, okay, now I know where these lots are, I know what's going on with this section. From the information that I got from the office, it has not been spurs, it's, don't know where it's at. Uh, it's been lost in the transition, a lot of hands of some of those maps.
I, maybe, New Zealand to provide some information for you.
That, that, that was key, what you guys sent over was key on, on my end to turn around and figure out where I was with the whole front end, and what we're doing down here and stuff.
Different, see, there's, there's different ways a lot gets restrictions on it, uh, if, if you transfer a water meter, if you transfer even a weight disposition. A lot that you transferred from has to be deemed restricted against being developed. But that's different from a actual conservation, it just means you can't, uh, you can't. You're gonna get restricted against ever getting water and sewage, where it's open, but I'm just.
I'm gonna, uh, wrap this part of the discussion up. And, sorry, the agenda topic is discussion regarding the community park plan and the current state of that, uh, set of documents. Um, what we're discussing, this is. You know, uh, the current state of what we have. That's outside, that's based on the community park plan, important, we've got to get to that, but it's not this topic. Um. So, other, other key odds from this, you know, set of documents that, uh, you know, the, the summary I, I put out, um, Jam Kermit.
Well, I think the, chasing that issue of the two thousand seven. Or two thousand nine map has this open metal thing that is for reserved for, for passive use only. And I don't see anything, uh, and that's one thing we've had, a line from that, uh, from the, uh. Old house in a north, you know, westerly line, uh, north, northwest angle, uh, leaves about ten acres that are passive only. And that's, to me, this paragraph right here on page seven of thirteen, where it says, designation of the community park will be the only active recreation area of the ranch. That. Says that, that issue doesn't exist on the map.
Yeah.
Uh, that it's open for, for active recreation. And that, that should be active.
Let's get to that spot, let's get to that paragraph.
All right.
Well, what, where?
It's on page seven of set thirteen.
Page seven. Oh, right, oh, the page numbers of the box, yeah. So this is, is referencing the page numbers of the box.
Yes, because that, if that issue is, is valid all the way through, that solves all the, well, some of the major issues we have, of where.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the, the two thousand nine probably evolved as much from money. And lack of it as anything, because they've cut back the watering, they've taken away the, the active turf, the, the beautiful green things that were in there. The tennis courts, all that stuff would drop, but, and got to more practical use of the, for the, the park, what we, we can support and live with. But somehow the open meadow area turned into passive only. And that's, uh, something that, uh, uh, Carlos, uh, you know, promoted, and you pretty much, you know, said that was an active line required also. And now this paragraph here pretty much tells me what I've been looking for is, uh, the east, the east ranch is designated for a community park, which is active recreation.
Mm-hmm.
They moved the fields because they didn't need as many and cut, and cut this open, but I don't. I don't know where that passive recreation requirement is written. And.
And do we have to honor it?
Yeah, it was just a change of the plan, probably.
Well, it doesn't state it anywhere, Kitty's, Sarah's got her.
She's got a comment, I think, on it.
I do, I think, so there was a certain number of acres designated for the community park, and I don't. Have the documents and the numbers, but a certain number of acres designated for the community park. Of the, a large chunk of that was for active recreation, and the rest of it was supposed to be designated in native vegetation and, and hiking paths, which are passive recreation. So trails. Um, it didn't say that the entire community park was compulsory active recreation, actually, the plan had it divided up. In response to community inputs at the time it was made.
Are you talking about the two thousand nine plan, or are you talking about the two thousand three plan?
Talking about the, uh, conservation.
I think it's the two thousand nine.
And, oh.
Okay, see, that's what I would like to.
But I don't have it, you know, there's a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of documents, and I don't have it in front of me, and I don't have summaries of them.
An excellent summary, by the way, and can we click on this? Uh, it can, in the, in the document, you refer to different things, can we actually click and see?
Yeah.
Which is really cool, if you took a look at that, that's a very comprehensive, yeah, if you click on that, great, that's cool.
Yeah, but in the, the O R L C can get there.
Right, yeah. So.
Does someone at that point determine that we couldn't use all of our. Our, um, community park space for active recreation? And chopped off a portion and designated it passive recreation? I believe that someone was the public, public.
Well, it, but see, it doesn't come out in the management plan and stated, and frankly, I don't know why, even if it did, this is a resolution by the. By the, uh, CCSD, I would like to see the CCSD declare the area all active recreation. There's no reason it shouldn't be, it's not like anything was going to take out, but to say that you can't put a disc golf thing over there, because it's. It's not passive, then we have to act, the argument difference between passive recreation and active recreation. Who cares if it's active or thrown a, a disc golf, but that's every issue we'd have in there, is what can you do on recreation and passive? It, it values on the area that was supposed to be a community park, an area of active recreation as shown in two thousand and three, it was meant to be active. Um. And I don't know who gave it up, it is. And I don't know who gave it up as much. It was a consideration, a lot of it of. Of, um. Activity making noise. And that's why, you know, everyone had lights and stuff. That's out of the bounds of active. Uh, you don't play disc golf in the dark, you're not going to light it. So the, the issues, then we don't have to chase this stuff. If it's all declared active.
I agree.
I recommend that we put that on an agenda, next agenda item. We've got five minutes left. Maybe that's the topic. Because I'm not going to vote to extend. Good.
But I like that idea too. I think it's absolutely right.
So on, on future agenda, so we are on future agenda discussion and that's where, uh, you wanted to comment.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to be a long history of. Negotiating over this property hasn't been very well documented. It's unclear to me.
Yes.
Was that part of the conservation easement, that restriction? Was it a decision that was made, you know, to vote on it? Like, how did that come to pass and? It seems like there's no cogent paper trail, all these, any of these decisions.
It was worse on two fourteen. Two fourteen didn't have a track at all and the dogs drew.
So it seems like there needs to be. Some kind of legally, legal requirements, what is the basis and then. Probably a survey to reset our community's position now.
We're not.
That was part of the decision-making process ethic, but I don't know.
So, so, so future agenda topics. You know, specific about the constraints. That's what you're talking about.
By law.
The, uh, specific, uh, uh, whether, yeah, whether they're by law or by board resolution, but, uh, you know. But the specific constraints.
Yes.
Okay, between now and, and the next meeting, can we suggest to you something?
So, so that is on the agenda before it's.
Yes, yeah, all the way to the Monday and a half. Right, okay. Um, but legal requirements, the discussion of what additional information is needed. Um, AKA survey, but I don't want to frame it as survey. I want to frame it as what additional information we need. In order to. Um, create a community park plan within those constraints. Um.
Well. What constraints are, is, is actually labeled on the park plan?
Mm-hmm.
Is there passive recreation only in that open meadow area? Or is it just mean open meadow area? Is, because it's a lot irrigated. Or, and the act, active recreation could be there. It's just doesn't, it's not, just not mowed and watered.
Right, the specific constraints.
Yeah.
But then, so, but not just.
But it's only, it's only those two definitions, active and passive that we're tracing.
And the areas, the boundaries.
Yeah, yes. As, as opposed to saying parts of the area are not active and some parts are passive. Because I don't need a label on the area that's going to be left undisturbed.
Right, and yeah, a conversation, conversation I had with Shawnee Shon, uh. About this golf, uh, couple interesting things, you know, and she made the comment that that seems to be a passive recreation. That was surprising. And she also made the comment that in terms of. Looking at what was in the, uh, CDP, they. Um, look at, you know, that may have not have been a thing then, and what is. Consistent with the intent of what's, what's approved versus what's outside the intent.
Mm-hmm, because they, they have only approved two thousand and three plan. They've never gotten a copy of the two thousand and nine.
We met with Shawnee and there was, I mean, you, I think, talked to her after she spent some time doing this, but.
Yeah.
She had a hard time telling us which maps were actually adopted and we need to follow. After a lot of weeks of work, so.
And before the answer was two thousand and three was the only.
Yeah, that was the only one.
So, um, futures in the items, obviously, you know, and find those constraints better. Um, you know, look into the additional information slash survey. Um, the, uh, other agencies. You know.
Yes.
Yeah, um, the.
Other nonprofits, right, you were saying?
Not necessarily nonprofits.
Agents, okay.
Uh, other entities.
Okay.
Uh. That, um, will be productive for us to engage regularly on the agenda and how to do that. Yeah, uh, I was, I was about to put that on this agenda. I knew it wouldn't fit and, um.
It's a big discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I want us to do it right by discussion.
Yeah.
Um, so. Normally, um, on the meeting evaluation, I like to do that as a whole, but that'll take. Some time. So I'll, I'll ask, um. Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yes, you know, and. Deal free, but, uh, if you would, um. What, you know. What, what, well, about this meeting and what, what things would you like to do?
Send an email.
Fair enough. Yeah.
Do this and put this up.
Yeah, well, that, that's a good suggestion.
I gotta go.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll, I will add to that and. And.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Can I make a public comment?
One public comment.
Okay, one public comment. I think this committee is going to be organized.
It is.
That you might get something done.
Thank you.
Three years.
Or do they have another meeting? I'm so spread out, so.
Right, thank you.